On the consent agenda items and asked if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to remove any of the consent agenda items from that and place them on the regular agenda. Read through the consent agenda items very quickly. Item number one is resolution number two zero two one. It's a surety renewals and extensions. City of Galveston. Item number two is Green Acres, number two, minor subdivision plat. Item number three is Carrollton Phase Six, a final plat. Item number four is Carrollton Phase Seven A, a final plat. Item number five is McCain Station Commercial Phase Two Preliminary Plat. Item number six is Tompkins Farm Subdivision Preliminary Plat. Oh, my gosh.
There's too many papers. I've got two.
Told you I've been running fast on that. So, no, I have it right here. I'm sorry, folks. Who does not have a written agenda in the audience? Do you want me to read them for the online participants? Okay. Item number one, we have. We have a total of eleven items that are on the consent agenda and they include the item number one is surety renewals and extensions. Item number two is Carrollton Phase Three B, except public improvements. Item number three is Carrollton Subdivision amended preliminary master development plan. Item number four is Joey's Carpet Store paved parking lot site plan. Item number five is one seventy-six Factory Street amended site plan with alternative architecture. And item number six is two forty West Broadway amended site plan. Item number seventeen is one fourteen Coles Ferry Road amended site plan. Item number eight is Fairview Pizza and Pub Patio amended preliminary master development plan and revised final master development plan. Item number nine is Red River Town Homes, a final master development plan. Item number ten is Oak Hill Subdivision, a sketch plat. Item number eleven is Bledsoe Springs and amended preliminary master development plan. All of the consent agenda items are non-controversial and considered routine. But is there anyone in the audience who would like to have one of these items removed and placed on the regular agenda or come forward and speak in the public comment? Seeing none, then I'll close the public comment and I'll ask, is there anyone on the commission who would like to have one of these items placed on the regular agenda?
I have a question about number nine. Can I ask?
Number nine. Ms. Sibler, are you asking to place number nine on the regular agenda? Okay, we have a motion placing. Well, no, I actually don't need a motion for that. Number nine is placed on the regular agenda and will be conducted as the first item we covered. So would you put that in the form of a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item number nine?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda less the number nine.
And I will second that motion. Any discussion? Then all those in favor of approval, please indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, motion carries. And we will move into the regular agenda and we will start in sequential order. So we'll start with number nine. Resolution number two zero two one dash one three seven, Red River Town Homes, a final master development plan. Which staff members presenting this item?
We have not intended to have this.
Would you like for me to place that?
We have not intended to have. Well, I can go through this. This is not a problem.
If you'd like, I can move it to the tail end of the agenda.
No, I'll go ahead and present this request for approval resolution, which would approve the final master development plan for Red River Town Homes. On an eight point three four acre parcel of land located on northwest corner Red River Road and Long Hall Pike. This was approved recently by the city council with a preliminary master development plan. So the applicant has now come forward to present their final master development plan. It consists of eighty-three town home units on a private loop street with on-surface parking, interior stormwater detention within an open space track that encompasses both the private roads and the buffer yards. And the, of course, retention basins. The eighty-three units will be horizontal property regime configuration. And as you can see there on the screen, it's a looped street. Private street with access to and from Red River Road northwest of the intersection of Long Hall Pike and Red River Road. Again, the council did approve this as a preliminary master development plan a couple of months ago. And now that just before you were asking for approval. Now, one thing that I want to point out that was discussed previously as well is an area in southeast corner of their site is essentially left as part of an open space tract and is not shown with development. It's kind of a yard area and it'll slope down to the southeast corner. And so they will have a slight elevated area there on their southeast corner where buildings would be in a kind of a cul-de-sac looking feature. But that area will base, most of that area that's in the extreme southeast will be left vacant and could be used for future right-of-way if necessary. A sidewalk will be accommodating the development along Red River Road and it will connect it to site. Staff has reviewed the plan for compliance with our land development regulations and is recommending approval of resolution twenty twenty-one one thirty-seven with several conditions that are included in that resolution.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Do we have a representative for the applicant?
Yes, sir. Zach Baker with Greenlit Design. I'd be happy to answer any questions y'all might have.
Okay. Zach, are you in agreement with all the staff's conditions?
Yes, sir, I am.
Any questions or comments? Ms. Sibler?
I just want to make sure that the, because I know there was discussion about some parts, but I just want to make sure the drawings were matching what we were talking about last time. Okay. Nothing was adjusted.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion for approval.
We approve with all staff recommendations.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve with all staff's recommendations. A second. And we have a second, Mr. Strather. Any discussion?
Intention not to dedicate right away at this time.
We have no plans from TDOT. It's two TDOT state routes here. And so they would need to dedicate to TDOT. TDOT is not ready to receive it.
Okay. That's my only question. But to his point, there's enough space there that if you, if you did a roundabout, you have enough open space that could be dedicated.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It can be acquired. That was, the idea was to reserve that area for right-of-way acquisition at a later time.
Cool. Andy, I noticed you came forward. Were you wanting a chance to comment?
No, I'm just here to keep rounds, Zach.
Okay, alright. Then we have a motion on the floor with a second. Any, there's no further discussion? I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approval of item number nine, resolution number two zero two one dash one three seven with all staff's conditions indicated by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion approved. We'll move on into item number twelve, which is resolution number two zero two one dash one three zero, Gallatin Drive-In, except public improvements.
Item number twelve and thirteen are involving memory lane and Record Row, I believe is what the name is, out around where the drive-in was. They're on the agenda specifically, I think, because of they had, they don't have your typical sidewalk inclusion on all the things that are of your drawings, but there is a they do have a condition that engineering is going to come up with a way for them to get another, held another performance bond besides their maintenance surety. So that eventually the sidewalks will get built there. They weren't a requirement back when they were first done. But the drive-in. I believe it involves. Well, these were, it's two roads, but it was called Phase One and Phase Two when they were doing them back when they and we do have somebody interested in one of the lots now, so it's made everything. Engineering has agreed that they are ready to accept, except for the sidewalk problem, so.
Okay, that's twelve and thirteen. Yeah, okay. Do we have a representative for the applicant president?
Mister, Mister Chairman, also you need separate motions for these.
Zach Baker with Greenlit Design. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
You in agreement with staff's conditions?
Yes, sir, I am.
Questions? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion. I will entertain a motion on item number twelve, which is resolution number two zero two one dash one three zero, the public improvements. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Wilson to approve with all staff conditions. Is that correct?
Yeah.
And a second by Mrs. Sibler. Is that correct? Okay, any discussion? None? I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approval indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Item number thirteen, same property, separate motion is the except public improvements. I'm gonna catch up. Okay, anybody, I'll entertain a motion. Item number thirteen, there's separate items twelve and thirteen. It's the same thing that she just presented, but they have to be voted on as separate. The motion to approve by Mr. Wilson. Second by Mr. Strather. Any discussion? Seeing none, then call for the vote. All in favor of approval indicate by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion approved. Thank you. Item number fourteen is Albert Gallatin Avenue Extension. It's a street renaming, I think. Engineering, are you presenting this?
Thanks, Chairman. Yes, sir. We discussed this item at the work session just a couple of weeks ago. The city of Galveston is getting close to completing a construction project that would extend a new roadway from the intersection of Bligh, North Water Avenue, Old Highway one oh nine, and Hatton Track Road across currently an undeveloped open field to Highway one oh nine. So with that, the, the project has been called a couple of things, Hatton Track Road Extension and Albert Gallatin Avenue Extension, as well as a northern bypass and just some other other little names like that, but we, we presented to you an option that would name this new segment of roadway, West Albert Gallatin Avenue. Retain the name of the existing portion of North Water Avenue, which is shown as segment B on the figure that you've got in front of you. And then segment C was to rename the Albert Gallatin Avenue roadway to East Albert Gallatin Avenue. When we discussed it a couple of weeks ago, the planning commission did ask the question of whether or not it would be possible to name the section of North Water Avenue two names, which would be North Water Avenue and Albert Gallatin Avenue. And, and I did make that request of Sumner County E nine one one. They gave me no and two capital letters. So that they were certainly not in favor of doing something like that. But it still could be your recommendation if you'd like. That they were, they were good with all, all the other things that we've talked about, West Albert Gallatin Avenue, North Water Avenue, and East Albert Gallatin Avenue, as they're shown here. And, and that's the way that our recommendation is written, written up to go on to the city council.
That's the one that council preferred, right?
That is what council suggested that we, we move through the process. Correct.
Alright, well, anything else, Nick?
That's it. Yes, sir.
Of course, the city of Galveston is the applicant, so we'll just open this for discussion or entertain a motion. I just no, it's not a question. I'll just state it. I've been thinking about this. This is a bad idea. On so many levels, there needs to be West Hatton Track and East Hatton Track. And I've looked on maps. I wish I could cite the exact examples, but I have looked on maps and I've seen where old roads have been used like this and, you know, Jenkins Avenue comes north and then it doglegs over and you have to catch the continuation of Jenkins Avenue further over. No, I don't like this, the way this is written and won't vote for it in favor of that. I think we ought to recommend counsel that North Water Avenue, that section of North Water Avenue be renamed either West Hatton Track or East Hatton Track, depending on where your center point of naming addresses is.
Mr. Chairman, Hatton Track is not one of the roads and it's a, it's a, it's a street already that's runs parallel with the new segment of what would be West Albert Gallatin.
What are the three names? A is?
A is West Albert Gallatin.
Okay, I misspoke. Albert Gallatin.
B is North Water, which retains its existing name, and C goes from Albert Gallatin to East Albert Gallatin Avenue.
I'm, I'm so used to calling it Hatton Track that I've.
But Hatton Track is a road. It's just parallel with the east segment of A.
And Hatton Track Road will remain in use, not totally as it is, because it, it currently goes up to the intersection with Bligh and it will be disconnected from that cul-de-sac, so you'll have to access Hatton Track from within the neighborhood.
I mean, yeah, I'm in, I'm, I'm definitely not batting a thousand today, so I meant Albert Gallatin. But where is the center point, did you say?
I think you would suggest that we rename the, the segment that is labeled B as West Albert Gallatin Avenue. The, the north-south line would be basically Old one oh nine and Dobbins Pike. And so your suggestion would be to rename that section B as to, to West Albert Gallatin Avenue.
As I understand it, what this all centers around is that I understand this is an inconvenience to the people who are on North Water, that section B, because they have their addresses listed on stationery and mailing addresses and but there's six properties. One of them is a multi-tenant property with lots of tenants in that property.
Was there a discussion with nine one one? I mean, they would obviously prefer it to be all the same.
They would have no problems renaming that section of roadway to West Albert Gallatin Avenue. I, I think that the numbering scheme would work just fine. Probably could actually keep the same address number, their box number and rename North Water Avenue to West Albert Gallatin Avenue. And because it does, the, it does ascend from, from right to left or from east to west. And so it, it actually works out well to be able to do that.
Nick, did you say that none, that EMS said no to leaving that North Water and the others being Albert Gallatin East and West? What the like is on here?
Yeah, what the question, I think I understood the question a couple of weeks ago to be, could we name that segment B two names so that it, it had, basically it could be called one or the other by anybody. And so in other words, if, if I wanted to call it North Water Avenue, I could call it North Water Avenue, but I could also call it Albert Gallatin Avenue. And that, that was the question that I asked. The.
I didn't remember that. Thank you.
And I hope I understood that correctly when we were meeting a couple of weeks ago. Okay.
We've renamed streets before, inconvenienced people before?
Very often. I think Bill recalled.
We, we had a street.
I guess Dorothy Jordan Avenue.
Bligh Avenue was renamed, the segment of Bligh was renamed to Dorothy Jordan. It's about three blocks long, maybe. And then we had another street called Lincoln Street. I think it changed Lincoln Drive or vice versa.
It was more of a clarification rather than a renaming. So we haven't done it very often. Now, E nine one one, they've made corrections as well as, as they've been given the authority to, to do some things like that. But most of theirs are usually numbers, number issues as opposed to names.
Didn't we recently have a situation where non-monger renamed a street because it conflicted with another street name that was named in honor of a fallen officer?
Crystal. And Fairway Farms Phase Four.
Yeah. I don't know if there were any people with, I don't know if there were any people living on that yet. It might have been just platted, but.
Yeah, I was thinking it really wasn't developed all the way.
I don't know if they'd had built houses at the time.
Right.
I can just pose a question to Ms. Alexander. And this isn't our job, but is there any precedent for council to reimburse the people along section B right there for the cost to change their the cost associated with a dress change?
Your question is it's the city's responsibility to reimburse them because of the name change?
Well, that's what this is all around.
I mean, I'm saying, is that your question?
Yeah, I'm, well, I'm just asking you, is there any precedent for a city to reimburse people for the cost associated?
I don't have an answer for that. I can look into it, but I don't have an answer for that.
I know we reimburse people for other inconveniences, but that's not our job. Um.
B is North Water Avenue, right?
Yes, sir.
Why not make A and B North Water Avenue? What's, what's the difference?
No, North Water continues. Well, I used to have a point, but it wouldn't work on that anyway. North Water continues this old one oh nine. Isn't that correct?
No.
Oh, it didn't?
North Water Avenue ends where A begins and it, it's referred to as Old Highway one oh nine, going to the north.
Does go south though, as North Water?
From the intersection of, between C and B there, so North Water comes up from, from Highway thirty-one E.
So you're really, you're, what I'm proposing, and that is rename A and B both, West Albert Gallatin. All you're really doing is lopping off a tail end of North Water, just a, a last little tail, which is B. Is it, am I correct?
I didn't understand that.
I always thought North Water goes up, past St. John Vandy Church, turns left there at the funeral home intersection. And then the, what is, how we want to know north, the old highway one oh nine north, I thought that was a continuation of North Water, but I think you're telling me that North Water addresses end at the west end of that red line.
Right, the name stops there.
Well, that's all the more reason to just rename it and call this thing Albert Gallatin. So where we stand is I'll entertain them. I will vote against the motion if anybody makes a motion to approve it as written. So I'll entertain a motion to that effect and vote against it, or if I hear no motion, I'll do my best to restate this motion.
Chairman, do we hold a public comment?
Yeah, buddy.
I'd like to know. I, I've never have been clear on how many businesses are on B section. I think you just said six, but that's the first I've heard.
But one of them is a multi-tenant. It's like, what is it?
Like an industrial.
Industrial park type thing. So that one address, whatever it is, has several tenants that share that address. For instance, eleven seventy-six North Water C or D.
So when you say several, do you mean two or three tenants or ten or fifteen?
I'm not sure. I just heard multi-tenant.
Not sure either. They're all on Mr. Mudd's property. Multiple warehouses.
Well, that's, that's the main concern. I believe that council is keeping that without having to be changed. If I remember.
What your job is, make it be at West Hatton Track.
I'm proposing that A and B would be called West Hatton Track.
Albert Gallatin.
Dag gummit. I'm going home. Albert, West Albert Gallatin and C would be East Albert Gallatin, I believe. So if we don't have a motion to approve it as written, I will attempt to rewrite it.
We, we need to have a public comment.
We sure do. At the time, I'll open the public comment if there's anybody in the audience who would like to speak in regards to this item.
Good evening. Suzanne Simon, four seventeen, Franciscan Way. I just think for the future, it's just easier if it's all named the same. I agree with Mr. Ferrer on that. It's just when you come here and you're new and a single road changes names multiple times, it's extremely confusing. I know it's difficult for those business owners, but I would have to agree that for many, many years down the line, it's just smarter to change the name. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's public comment, if there's no one else who wishes to speak, at this time I'll close the public comment. Mrs. Sibler?
Hi. Mr. Wilson was saying something about North Water. Were you, I just wanted to finish up his statement. Could we kind of stop? As you're talking about continuing North Water, taking that left and the rest of that being the whole North Water, the flitters, A and B being North Water? Is that what you were saying, Mr. Wilson?
Yeah.
When you were saying about North Water, how it goes up and it meets and it turns into B? And then you were saying A and B both being North Water, is that what you're inquiring about? Okay.
In B, to be West Hatton.
No, you've got, I've got two going now.
It's Albert Gallatin.
I did it too.
Yeah, Albert Gallatin.
If I get this right, John, what you're proposing is two wrote, two names, not three. He started out shaking his head, now he's fine. So it'll, it would just be, A and B would be West and C would be East Albert Gallatin.
Because as Nick explained to us the other day, section C is already called East Albert Gallatin Drive and it already has occupants or people on that with physical addresses that have been assigned addresses. And they start the numbering going up from Dobbins Pike headed east. And so you have to have that as East Albert Gallatin because those are in ascending order of addresses. I hope I'm getting this right, Nick. So if we were to name A and B sections, the blue line and the red line, both as West Albert Gallatin, you would start ascending order addresses, starting at Dobbins Pike and moving to the west and start ascending, you know, probably 101, 201, 301 by block. West Albert Gallatin. But because currently as it's written, that section B would remain as North Water with those addresses and the ascending order address nomenclature for section A would start over there at, well, the junction of Old Highway 109. It's just chopped up and fragmented. I understand this has been an inconvenience to people.
Can't guarantee what council will say, but I'll go along with you because it makes sense.
Can we make a recommendation that's sent back to the council?
Yeah, I'm going to do my best to make a recommendation if you record this. Ariane is. Do I need to modify the current, this current one? Because this is, we're really making an entirely different mod, address. Let me see if there's a way to modify it by removing wording, or if I just need to write an entirely new one.
I think what you what you would now what you would like to do is in section two of the resolution is that you want sections A and B both named West Albert Gallatin Avenue. And then section C would remain as East Albert, Albert Gallatin Avenue. So it's just changing that's the action part of the resolution to name A and B West Albert Gallatin Avenue.
Did you say section two or is it item one of the resolution?
It's item 14, section two, the resolution.
I think in, in section one, number one.
Well, that just discusses what we've been talking about. I guess that can stay the same, but.
Yeah, I was, Nick, I'm seeing section one, number one.
Right, that's just a description of the roads as they are now.
Okay.
Versus act, section two is your, would be an actual recommendation.
So I'll make a motion that we recommend approval with the following change. Not condition, but a change is in section two, the Gallatin Municipal Planning Commission hereby recommends approval to the Gallatin City Council to name new segment of roadway identified as section A and section B on the plan, parentheses, currently North Water, to be renamed as West Albert Gallatin Avenue. And then section C to remain, remain, remain named as East Albert Gallatin. I'm not even sure that's part of it, does say it in there. Is that clear enough?
You need a second?
Yes, sir. We have a second by Mr. Wilson. Any questions on that resolution or that motion? Seeing none, then we'll call for a vote. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, all opposed. Okay. See what council does. Item number 15 is resolution number 2021-133, a zoning ordinance amendment, temporary use and occupancy permits issue. Bill, are you presenting that?
Yes, sir. Okay, this first item that we have on the code amendments is a change to to a part of our zoning code dealing with temporary use permits. It adds some definitions for lang, uh, in the language and definition section of the ordinance describing what temporary use, uh, structure and temporary use and temporary use permit. We just never had one in there. So we made some changes, primarily we're focusing our efforts on addressing food trucks and accommodating food trucks as a unique or separate item. And we, we've identified that in here. However, city council has adopted an ordinance that essentially takes the food truck component of a temporary use out of the zoning code. So food trucks are allowed to roam around town and pretty much set up anywhere they want to under the pretext of what's described in chapter 11 article. I think nine of the code now. So what we will want to ensure here then is that we identify that those food vendors that are not qualified as a food truck or an ice cream truck still remain as a temporary use, and I think we've done that here. So what we've also done is some cleanup to remove some inconsistencies or conflicts with our existing section, uh, that deals with temporary use permits. So it's clear to applicants as to what it will apply to them. And we clarify that temporary use permit's not required for a private event. It's not open to the public for block party, for example, subdivision or something. And so we've tried to refine this as much as we possibly can. We took out a section pertaining to purity amounts for private improvements and only require it for public improvements. We also have, again, as I mentioned, clarified the mobile phone vendors and the differences between the different types of mobile food vendors. And also we just stricken completely the temporary tent type or mobile vendor sales, because that's already included in the section under number two. Yeah, that deals with transit vendors and mobile vendors. So there's no need to have to that in two different places. It creates some kind of inconsistency within the code, so we wanted to remove that. So other than that, there's just some editorial changes that we're requesting. So this is a code amendment and we've talked about this, and I think most, almost all of the changes we've talked about in detail though were related to the food trucks and mobile food vendors. So if you have any questions about any of these proposed changes, we recommend approval, of course, of this amendment.
Okay, um, questions? I'll just ask one question. This is one item, it's item number 15. Before we talk about the need for two documents, one was regarding the the or, one was a zoning ordinance and then one dealt with, but the zoning ordinance didn't deal with anything in the right of way. Help me to understand the difference.
Any, is that we don't zone our right of ways? They would be zoned if they were private streets within a development like we talked about tonight. But the public rights of way are not zoned. All the properties adjacent to the public rights of way are zoned. So those are what the zoning code regulates. So anything that's going on in the street itself or the right of way is regulated by the city code or ordinances. So there's a whole chapter, Nick administers most of it, I guess, right? That deals with doing work, utility work and driveway permits and addressing, addressing is part of that. And street naming, yeah, there's a whole bunch of different sections in there that deal with governing activities going on in a right of way.
Just to make sure I understand correctly, this ordinance we're voting on, I've read through it. This does not deal with, uh, in any way restricting or regulating what goes on, on the side of the street up here downtown, if somebody parked a food truck, that's not zoned, okay? Just want to make sure I communicate that clearly when somebody asks me about it. Questions on this? Hey, none, I've I read it, I can't do any better. I don't particularly like it, but I can't do any better. I'm sorry, I'll make a recommendation for approval as written.
Again?
Okay.
Yep.
This time I'll open a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak in regards to this? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. You're right. Okay, I have a motion for to approve the ordinance as written. The zoning ordinance amendment as written and second by Mr. Wilson, any discussion on that? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approval indicate by saying aye. Opposed, okay. Motion carries. Item number 16 is a zoning ordinance amendment for short-term rentals. Gallatin, Bill, are you presenting this?
Yes, sir.
This will conclude a public comment.
Missioners, this is a request to amend our Gallatin zoning ordinance to, in this case now, to allow short-term rentals as also authorized by state statute, but to allow them essentially in all of our residential zones and any commercial zone that we allow either things like bed and breakfast or transit habitation. So this is quite a difference from what we've discussed previous because I have a recent decision by the Summer County Chancery Court, which Matasha would be able to answer the details on that. But essentially the court ruled that the Hendersonville ordinance is not valid and that they are required to allow people to use their properties for short-term rental. Of course, it doesn't restrict any deed restrictions in developments that would prohibit that, but for purposes of administering our zoning code, they would be allowed. So y'all may recall, we had an ordinance that essentially restricted them initially from that. And we worked a couple of sit, work sessions and had some discussion about that. Well, this ordinance is different. This one does allow them in residential zoning districts and in commercial zoning districts where again, those activities are allowed now. So in one case, I think it's, it is a conditional use in the PNC zoning district. But other than that, it becomes a permitted use. There however, are some rules that we can establish and those are included in article 12 under the supplementary district regulations of our zoning code that we're requesting that you consider or to add into our code. So these would essentially mirror the restrictions that are allowed by state statute. Y'all had, after some discussion, the main change that we made about those, these rules. The rules didn't change a whole lot, it's just where we allow them is that we require caretaker person to be available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and they have to respond within one hour. So we had some ordinances, like the bigger cities had two hours for a response and the smaller cities, I think it's had as much as, as little as a half hour. So I just kind of split it there, put one hour is the caretaker or local contact person response time. There are those people there to take care of problems, you know, if there's behavior problems or if there's a mechanical or some kind of problem like that, there's a call. So we added a few of these things and by and large, the other change, the other conditions were not changed. We kind of require parking based on the number of bedrooms that they have. So, you know, that may disqualify quite a few units because they might not be able to meet the parking requirements. So in these really small lots, if they have a house or condo units or something, and they can't demonstrate that they can provide adequate parking, then that might be something that restricts them from being able to operate. So otherwise, a lot of these are, replicate some of those restrictions and regulations that are imposed by other communities. And you have in front of you a handout from, we've given you this before from many other cities in Tennessee and what their basic restrictions are and operating requirements. And again, we've tried to include many of these in our ordinance in one way or another. So we're, based on that, we're recommending approval of this amendment to the zoning code in this resolution.
Bill, without looking, do we have anything in our code about liability insurance?
Uh, we do not have that in our, don't believe I added that in.
I would think that that would be something good to put in there, that the owner would be responsible for that, so the city's not held responsible.
But would that not fall under home insurance? Would that not fall under regular home insurance?
Oh, I, I'm just looking at College Dale and they have it listed under there.
Yeah, I, again, I, I may not have included that because we, we don't impose that thing on any other business in town that they have to obtain that liability insurance, like a hotel that provides the same type of service. So bed and breakfast for that matter, we don't have a liability insurance requirement. So that was, you know, I didn't put everything in there. I didn't, I didn't, you know, it's not like I was making the soup and then throwing one of everything in there. I just tried to pick out some of those things that y'all discussed to want to put in there. I remember the caretaker one was something, you know.
Did you point me that, obviously the entire stack of papers that I picked up were the wrong ones from my office, including the agenda. Stack papers where I have my notes, where is the part about the caretaker and how exactly is it worded? Because I want to make sure that if they don't provide a caretaker that they can
Yeah.
be denied their permit continued.
That will be in article 12 supplementary district regulations, section 1202 on page 13 of the draft. And it says, um, short-term rental operation requirements for properties described under sub-section A, which is described above. Uh, any owner or operator of short-term rental shall, and number four is a caretaker or local contact person designated by the operator shall be available 24 hours per day, seven days per week for the purposes of physically responding as necessary within one hour notification of an emergency or complaint regarding the condition, operation, or disruptive contact of occupants of the short-term rental and taking remedial action necessary to resolve any complaints. Uh, the designated contact person may be the owner, the leasing or the owners. Agent, misspelled that word, glad I read that. Agent, not agenda.
Well, I had my carefully worded this, a change to that, and I'm trying to do it in my head here. This is caretaker, just wanted to be worded caretaker comma or a owner's representative with decision-making authority or final decision-making authority. I just want to make sure that's in there so that the person who responds to the call doesn't show up and say, well, you know, I clean the bathrooms and change the light bulbs, but if you're asking about this, you're going to have to get in touch with the owner. I don't know where he is. It needs to be somebody with authority to make a decision.
Okay.
A decision like kicking the tenant, kicking the renters out if they're having a loud front party. And tell them that they don't get a refund or whatever the case might be. Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, we can do that.
That was the only change I had to. That was the only change I had to.
Jim Partner, Gallatin claimed to permit. So the liability insurance is in there uh under five uh section C.
Oh, is it? They include that C?
Yeah.
Liability insurance to the city. Uh, okay. Yeah, we did conclude that. Sorry about that. But in the section I thought.
And to answer Mr. Merle's question, um, it's kind of like using your car for Uber. It's a different insurance than it would be for using your personal vehicle.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, if there's.
I had a question. Is that application fee involved in this one?
There is a apply for a permit with the city, which is part of C one, so there would be. And we have to pay business tax.
And I didn't see it, but I'm sure buried in there somewhere that if somebody fails to meet these conditions, such as not providing a decision maker representative, then the permit can be revoked.
That that's under uh state statute.
So any other discussion? None. I'll, I'll make a motion to uh approve with the change of wording I previously stated. Is that adequate to say, or do I need to restate it again? Okay. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Second by Miss Hibler. Any discussion? So none, then I'll call for the vote. All those and did I do a public comment? Okay, let me open a public comment. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak in regards to this item? None, I'll close the public comment. Now I'll make the motion. And we have a second by Mrs. Hibler. Uh, seeing none, I'll call, no other discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approval indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed? Motion carries. Any other business?
No, I just want to remind you, uh, tomorrow is the joint planning commission council meeting on the comp plan, where you'll be able to ask questions and uh the draft that's been prepared. Presentation a month or so ago by GNRC to the council. And now this is opportunity for y'all to go through that hundred page draft or ninety nine page draft and ask questions specifically about uh what the content of that. So that starts at four o'clock tomorrow. Yeah, four o'clock tomorrow in this room. So I will be both uh the, they'll have the tables arranged a little bit differently. So we won't be sitting up here, we'll be sitting down there, but hopefully for a lively session and uh, I'm in a lively session. Uh, when another reminder is the TAPA conferences in early, wish I had the dates with me. It's in uh early October and it's in Chattanooga this year and it's a joint conference with the Georgia Comp, um, Georgia APA. So it'd probably be the biggest one they've had. So looking forward to that, assuming it doesn't get counse- canceled for, you know what?
You'll have a date.
Uh, I don't have my phone with me. Y'all know. Six through eight.
Six through eight.
Well, we'll keep reminding you.
When was the um, the last app of conference that was uh all online virtually?
Uh, February, I believe.
That was, yeah, that was February this year.
Late February, I believe. Yeah.
I did that whole conference, so put me down for those hours.
Last one I had that was in person was in Gatlinburg in March of twenty nine, twenty twenty twenty.
Everyone received the uh email with the link for the videos that you can watch if you can't do the fall conference. Did anyone not get that email?
It it was just sent today, so you probably haven't had a chance to look at it yet, so.
Uh, any other uh announcements? Seeing none, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay.
Thank you.